It's next on the agenda, we wanted to talk about revaluations.
Dr. Leitner.
Things coming up, so we've asked him to take about, I guess about twenty-five thirty minutes to go over revaluation, he's also ahead on collections for a bit, so Mr. Leitner, we'll turn it on you, sir.
We're gonna start with collections first because rebound, try getting some questions, but you know, setting values one thing, sending tax bills is another, but getting the money in is what this lady here and all of the department need for us to operate. The first page of that handout will discuss a few things. Main County, we never had forced collections as a regularity in the county, and in two thousand and four, the Board of Commissioners actually passed a resolution that set up guidelines for collecting to link five million dollars. And of those amounts, three million are from two thousand and thirteen, which is his current year, and we'll get a lot of that in, but two point six million is older than one year debt, and that causes a lot of problems. Our collection rate ubers around ninety-seven percent, and whatever the collection rate is, that's audited each year, is what the county can spend. So if you come up with a budget of fifty million dollars and your collection rate is ninety-seven percent, you got to put a factor in there of thirty percent so it allows for that three percent of delinquent taxes, so that means your tax rate goes up three percent.
Richard, that, that two point six?
Do what?
That two point six, which is linked before the one year, that's not from a particular year, that just, that's.
That's too huge. You can go back for ten years, anything after ten years, somebody come in and you can, yeah, we'll take it, but all they have to say is limitation of statutes and ten years, they don't have to pay it. That's if it's a dollar or four hundred thousand dollars, so you want to collect it. Another part of that problem is if it's a business or something, and they file bankruptcies, you really tie up your tax collection, so you have to give that the first year, you really need push on that. I'll give you an example, there is a taxpayer, it's a corporation in this county, and I've been here twenty-nine years, and that corporation has never paid taxes, so we can't get it, it's real estate, and it's a delinquent corporation, but still, we need to move forward. Most people just run and pay taxes, long time, a little bit late, but they pay their taxes. There's another corporation that we're dealing with, every year we threaten, push, and right now they owe us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes. There's one out of Highlands that we had to deal with, and it's a very well-known one. We've gone to attorneys, their attorneys, and had it for a long time trying to collect, you know, quarter million dollars in taxes.
That's not Kate Lansky?
So anyways, you know, we do collect it, but it takes a long time and a lot of manpower. And then, you know, you still got the mom and pop ones that are small developers or something, that's most of them out of town, well, they got a number of properties and we're not collecting much. They're using Main County as a bank. I mean, realistically, you know, there's no forced collection, we're not gonna contact it, we're not gonna force them to pay, we need to get out of that mode. We don't have the revenues coming in that you could be Mr. Nice Guy. I mean, you do it in a professional manner, but you have steps, procedures, and results, and that's what we're asking for. We talked with Mr. Jones, and he, he's our third attorney in the lab since two thousand and four when we set this program up, and you know, his, him and his wife or his staff, so you know, he has limited time to devote to things. He has helped us quite a bit, but now we'll ask him to move forward and get an outside attorney to help us on these collections, because it's to the point, we got to, you know, serve summons and foreclosure notices and all that stuff. So that's what I'll ask for that, if we move forward on that.
Richard, you, you talk like bringing an attorney, would they do that on a percentage?
Well, when they start filing the paperwork and court reports and that, the delinquent taxpayers have the honor of paying fees on that, it's added to the tax bill, so it's self-professorated. Some of the other things, when they send letters and that, we have some money for, you know, that stuff. It's just another avenue that we haven't had to use in the past, but our collection rate at the same time needs to go up one and a half, two points. We should be closer to ninety-nine seventy-seven.
They should have Chester and Seth had a chance to discuss the possibility.
We could discuss it for a year or so. And if that quote is from Chester in there on number E there, you know, he really wanted to, but his time limits are stressed.
Let's say that's true.
So that, that is collection, so we'll let you, I know this is not a date he makes things, but through consensus or something, that's the direction we are headed, and we'll work with Derek and Mr. Jones on that.
Does anybody have any questions about, about that or comments?
I see it as a twofold benefit with, in speaking with Richard about it, not only are you gonna get this, this money that's out there back, but you're also going to be able to increase your collection payment, which will be carried on for years to come.
But, I mean, the truth is, you know, we got, I'm guessing how the lowest tax rate in the state, the fourth lowest effective tax rate, but still at the same time, if people owe two point six million dollars, what they're doing is passing that on to those who do pay taxes.
Yeah, I mean, you take that out.
It's like people that, it.
Insurance, okay.
I can say a perfect example of that is people that don't have health insurance, they go to the hospital, they, they're gonna be treated, they don't turn away, but you and I pay for that through our cost for our health insurance, but it's the same thing, a little bit of my taxes, a little bit of your taxes, a little bit of Derek's taxes are covering that two point six that we don't pay.
One time deal, that'd be three cents on tax rate, a one-time deal, because once you collect it, you don't have that coming in every month, every year. But it's, it's averaging, three cents on tax rate, it's averaging about one cent on tax rate every year.
That's what I'm saying, and those who do pay taxes are, were paid for that.
Yeah.
That's not fair.
Are you gonna talk about, Richard?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna talk about ALF resolutions? Oh, you mentioned that, you have that contract with.
Oh, well, like I said, the actual one, you know, I want Chester and Derek to be involved, but that particular one, we've talked with them, Jack and us talked with them beforehand, and you know, one of the problems we'll have in the county is even some of our past county attorneys, they got conflict of interest. Can you imagine how much real estate has gone on in the county in twenty years, that attorney may have done so? This one actually does Jackson Counties, Eric Ryanauer, and they do, majority of their work is with Jackson County.
It confirms now, Ryanauer and Incones.
Yeah, and they, they got people they just hired up, and they gave us a fair rate, that's what we're gonna talk down with Chester and that, you know, he needs to see the contract. It's real simple, you know, we do X for X number of hours.
Do they do it on a percentage basis?
They do it on the fee, when they file their court report, they put their fees on it, but by law, they're allowed to collect.
To the taxpayer, I assume.
Under the general statutes, the county can apply as part of the cause for bringing the action for a order of judgment from the court, requiring the taxpayer to pay the county's reasonable attorney fees, so there, there is some discretion with the court on that point, there's also always a potential question on reasonableness of it, but I think as a general proposition, those fees are approved by the court.
Yeah, and they've done like fifty-four for Jackson County last year, and I know Hayward County, they got an attorney that they worked with just on the foreclosures and that. That's the firm I, we've met with them, we feel most comfortable with, but we, you know, I don't know if you would need a consensus or just if.
The resolution been passed.
The resolutions already been passed, but now it's just approving the contract, I think that's in Derek and Chester's authority.
So Derek, you and Chester look at this?
I've not seen, I've not seen the contract, but I, but Mr. Leitner is correct, we have, we have wanted to try to move this forward, but candidly, you have issues that come up for the county that for whatever reason are more present at the moment, and then you're just simply, but resolution out there, and to my knowledge, it has not been retracted.
So Derek, you and Chester, in theory, are you, are you moving ahead with this direction?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Well, it needs further board action to bring that back to us, if you feel like it does, if it doesn't, then presented.
Yeah, I, I think there would be a need for board approval of a contract.
I agree, but not to, not to start collections, because that's already been approved eight, eight years ago.
Yeah, and we already do some, but we're talking about, when we get past our limits in the office, then we need to go to the next step, and that's what that is.
That's what you did, you did approval of this board, I think, for seeking the contract.
We just make everybody on board that this is happening, and there won't be a shock to the board now. Okay, the next item is rebound. You know, we've been putting this off now, but there's no more put off, this is, is. The first thing you see is the timeframe, the schedule value is something you'll see real soon. Hopefully, we'll present that to the board on March eleventh, and these are the steps that you actually have to guide, there's a, general statutes that guide this timeframe. We have to advertise it, public hearing on the nineteenth, public hearing would be set the week of March twenty-four, twenty-seven, on the Commissioners, if they got another meeting that week. Board adopts the schedule on April eighth, and last day to appeal the scheduled values is May seventh, and the appeal is to the Tax Commission in Raleigh, so you know, you got to advertise so many days for so many weeks in the paper, so many days between the adoption of schedule and when you can, well, I mean, from the hearing to the adoption of schedule, that's two seven days, so there's a real strict guideline, so that's the guidelines we need to meet, because this is the year that we finalize all values. Notice of values will be sent between somewhere, hopefully November fifteenth and December seventy-first. Informal appeals start in January and go to February. The Board of Equalization will run from April until June, or until they finish, they could finish early, they could finish later. Valuation projections. County overall has lost twenty-five percent of its value from now back. We are basically working on two thousand and three values, that's what it's looking like. Bacon land has lost more than fifty percent and higher. Bacon commercials, some have lost, you know, some have not, because of location, some have lost sixty-five percent. Improved residential lots and things have lost thirty percent. The total decrease right now we're looking at is two billion dollars, we're going from nine billion back down to seven billion, thereabout. And if that projection stays in place for revenue neutral based on the budget we're working in right now, and not the one we're talking about in next year, your tax rate will be somewhere around thirty-eight cents, revenue neutral.
Richard, that's something I think we need to really communicate effectively every time we get a chance to do, is the math is, if, 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 county needs, right now it's about twenty-five million dollars in ads for on taxes, and just given everything else being equal, if going on, we know that we need about twenty-five billion, then I think the public needs to understand when they have a, when the rebound comes through and their property values go down, that there's a revenue neutral, the average taxpayer, the average taxpayer across the board will be able to pay tax bill after rebound as before. Now, the thing is sort of hard to grasp is what you pointed out there, that bacon land has lost more than, say, homes. Large homes probably will lose more value than smaller, so it's not gonna be across the board.
Statistically, you probably come up, a third will get a decrease, a third will stay about where they were, and a third will have an increase. And the bad thing about that is, it's not gonna be like things in the past, where the more valuable, you know, grew faster and they had a tax increase. Mr. Tate District and Mr. Baldwin over in Manahaven and that around the lake, they may actually see a decrease in some of their taxes on bigger expensive property. What it means is that the average person, there's so many people in this room, we all need a house to live in or a building of some sort, well, the average house, it's, it's in the median, so it don't increase, decrease that much, so that means we'll see a bigger burden than something else. And where they file, it also depends on the real estate market, where you're located, you know, demand in your neighborhood or your district, better than others, you know, we all know that people moving in here want to be closer to the towns and things now. There are some that will buy tracks out. The biggest growth is not, realistically, was not and is not the houses that we build or don't build. Biggest growth in the years past has been the development of raw land. I mean, you take a large acreage, a hundred acre tract that was valued at ten thousand an acre, well, they divided it up into eighty lots, and the lots are selling for thirty to two hundred thousand, that brought in more dollars than the construction ever would have, well, now the construction's low, land development is not a business.
Fifty percent, that's what it was, on average. But my point is, I think we just need to continue to effectively communicate that if, if the county needs twenty-five million, that's where on taxes, more or less, that a revenue neutral budget, a revenue neutral tax rate will bring that same amount in, but there's gonna be some variation depending on the types of properties we have.
And we'll have more defined examples later summer when we start actually putting a line of values.
Richard, can you speak just a minute, just so everybody understands that when your office goes out and does an appraisal, speak to me about foreclosures and short sales and.
Well, you know, by law, they're not supposed to be in the mechanism, Georgia did pass a law that you have to use them. However, when you get so many of those, it does have an effect on you selling your house. If there's so many foreclosure and that out there, a hundred thousand dollars, and my house is identical, I can't realistically bring in maybe a hundred and sixty thousand, maybe reduce some to close, not the yard sale price, but it may be a hundred and thirty thousand, so it does affect values, and we have to take that into consideration. We have properties right now listed on the four forty-one sound, well, some of those properties are two point two million dollars for bacon tract land, and it's been listed a long time. Well, I don't have any example anywhere that that's gonna happen, so that property, even though we got it listed for two point two million dollars, there's gonna be a whole lot left, so you have to weigh those type of things. I mean, we can look at the commercials there below the Bacon Corporate Bank Center where they're building that rest facility, you know, that's over six hundred thousand dollars a prime piece of property, so you know, the, the price of maybe a hundred thousand an acre, then it's not, it didn't bring that, so you got to look at those things. Future growth in projects, this is more going into the budgetary type stuff, you know, five years ago, we sat here and hoped and said that hopefully we'll be through this stuff in about two years, well, it's been five years, it hasn't improved. A sizable growth in tax base would depend on commercial development and residential recovery, you know, a commercial needs to come on on that. There's no sizable tracts left, I think there's two over five hundred acres in the county that probably held, so, and there, and there's some other ones, but they got conservation easements on it, so if somebody wanna come in and build a golf course or whatever, we don't have the property, unless they buy a number of properties. We're gonna have to absorb the large number of bacon commercial buildings for that process to start affecting what the values are. I've had a, one commercial man say, you know, people wanting to pay like four dollars a foot for a commercial building, you know, yeah, the Walmart Center can get twenty dollars a foot, but that's a lot, there's thousands out there, so you know, a developer is not gonna go out there and let's have a really fine piece of land, put down money, and start developing lots, we got to start absorbing those things for the land prices to start going back up. Like I said, we're looking at about two thousand and three, where we're equivalent to, we were about seven billion dollars in and we're gonna be there now, and for the value to get back to two thousand and seven, and I've talked to a lot of appraisers and that away from here and everything else putting across it, then we all agree it's five to ten years minimum, so what we're saying is, you'll be another rebound before you get back to oh seven, so do we ever get caught up? Probably not in no time soon, because the development is just not gonna come back that fast. I know that's hard to sit there and think, but we have to be realistic when we're looking at budgets and growth and all that, and you know, we used to bring in a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty million dollars every year in values, which gave you some leeway, but that was mainly through the land development. Housing, right now, it was in, I think in the working papers, no, yeah, I think it was hurt, talking about the different permits and things, and it was also an actual citizen, you know, we had like fifty-six permit, housing permit, Jackson County had a hundred and fifty-six, you know, so that's a big difference. Asheville's grown there to eighty, ninety percent last year, and other counties, but we're still hovering around the four percent, so you know, I hate being, sounding like a negative, I'm just setting up the tone that, you know, where the taxes are, since that's the largest part of what's happening, so we have to go back to revaluation. Last page is the budget coming up. By statutes, when we took this in-house, we, the county basically would fund, qualified a good rebound where the work's done right and everything else, and we, you know, like all counties, we cut and cut, and this, I think, is coming up in legislative, they got an actual legislative committee on this and puts the report back in May, but one of the biggest questions in state is that counties are not funding the work in tax office to do the revaluation, and there's gonna be new guidelines coming down on that or projections. See, when I go out on, if we put this out for bid, I put parameters out there and buy state law, what they have to do and everything, contractor will bid X number of dollars, in our case, it'd be about a million and a half dollars or more, and they do that. Well, when we bring it in-house, we didn't budget a million and a half over four years, eight years, whatever the cycle was, we just absorbed it, but since that time, we have lost two and a half people in our staff, and you say, well, we don't recall it, well, the way we lost them is, we had to absorb things that we shouldn't be doing. The person that greets you at the annex building to come in is one of our tax people that is doing administrative job, that person don't need to be doing administrative, answering the phone, doing mail and all that stuff, when they're trained to do other stuff. Then the state law changed on motor vehicles, where we have to send everything to Raleigh and work with Raleigh through D, via DMV and all that, that took another person out of the equation. We're supposed to have another one and a half appraisers to do outside the county, so they're, we're gonna have to work on that, because now it comes to the point where you get that notice and you wanna do something, you wanna talk to a person, you, somebody answered your phone or your letter, your email or whatever, and we're, we just don't have the staff to do that. Matter of fact, that's why Mecklenburg had such a bad deal last year. They told the county, everybody got any budget crunches and that, they cut twenty appraisers out, and they didn't have the staff to do it, and now they're spending up to five million dollars to go back and clean things up and do another rebound on top of the one they just finished, and so that, you know, you can do so much with so much staff, and it gets problematic.
But you're still, you're still gonna gain money wise if you bid this out of the million and a half dollars, it's not the cost back to do what you did.
No, I'm just saying that's over the whole project. Some of the things that will increase and they have to, Board of Equalization, we have to go back up on our budget on that, because that's a voluntary board, they meet for months at a time, you got costing fee appraisals for commercial buildings and things, printing costs and the notices, publication, getting out legal fees. At one time, the legal fee, they estimated cost you twenty-five percent whatever rebound cost you, so for a million dollar rebound, you should have somewhere in a quarter million dollar fees associated with that. We have been fortunate in Main County. Certainly, they may fall apart in my near future, but in twenty-nine years, we have won every case at the Property Tax Commission, and it, it's not that we're that much better than we tried to solve the problem before we get there, but when we do go, if Mr. Corbin appeals his house there as an individual, he comes in, he appeals, we say, well, we think it's right, he goes to Board of Enormity, says, you know, that's a good value, well, he's still not satisfied, he just applied in Raleigh, but Mr. Corbin, he can go down to Raleigh and represent himself as a personal homeowner, a property owner. When we go to Raleigh, I pick up a phone call attorney, and the clock starts ticking. We had one recently that we have already won in Raleigh, but the man reapplied, drug us out till the day before the hearing, and then withdrew, well, my attorney fee, even though we had all the cases already won from the year prior, was five thousand dollars.
I could interject something though there, Richard had done something in that thing, which I think has been very helpful to the county. In these property tax bills, oftentimes, a taxpayer or taxpayer attorney will utilize the fact that we're six hours from Raleigh, and it's gonna cost the county a bunch of money to send someone down to fight these bills. Richard had made contact with an attorney in Raleigh that specializes in this area, and he used to work with the State Property Tax Commission, and so we don't have that tremendous expense of travel down and travel back associated with attorney's fees because of our relationship and because of his, his insight in taking that bargaining chip on the table.
The attorney he's talking about, also is the Property Tax Commission attorney, he's on eight years, so he knows the law inside out, but that is the expense that we, we have to shoulder, so that will be increased next year and the year after, and then you come in, travel on train, we have to be certified in a couple of years and that's going up. And the last, the top item is our vehicle running down, you know, you hear from sheriffs on that, but in my budget right now, I'm, I already spent five thousand dollars on repairing one of the vehicles, and we only budgeted two thousand, it's already gone through three transmissions, we were going to replace it this year, but it made it till about the last day and got gone, but see, all these things, we have to have to carry out the job, so those are things that are coming up that will be voted for in the future, and we'll keep that as a minimum, but it's still reality in what we have to do.
Richard, one thing is not lea- Richard, one thing that's not listed that we've talked about for several years is we're need to enhance and update the computer system.
Okay. I didn't really want to bring that up because it's longer than 20 minutes. Shortened, and Andy's here, but shortened it and then we can talk about it in another meeting or whatever. The computer system is the 1980s version. And we're fine, we got a lot of modulars out there that we have good pickings. Mike Peter that used to work with the farm, but he keeps ours running, he's very reasonable product, does anything we need to do and works with Andy very well. We talked about the permissioner software last year, thinking that may be an option. Well, over this past year, we've done some more research and done other things. Sales are a real bit. They say you something, so I need a spare tire with car. Boy, that's extra. Well, we figured out the extras. So I think, you know, there's a big reality in the sense that money's not really available for a lot of things. We are satisfied with our software right now. There's no really great options out there. As long as we can keep ours running and that, I think we're fine for a while. But there still is a time and place that we're going to have to replace that. And tell you, when we get into that, that's a major deal. Andy's office has already been cut, well, through absorption where he's had people leave and all that. He had our GIS person leaving. Through all this stuff, he don't have the staff to babysit us for four years. I mean, we would need an IT person to be working just with the tax office and the collections and that for over four years because we can't just pull in box A and put in box B. We have to do a rebound during that time, make all of the schedules and everything work out so we can get it ready for four years in the future. That's the shortest time. So with all those problems, we just think that we're going to continue on this year and next until we see how we can actively fund things like IT, IT personnel and this other stuff. We've got other projects that is demanding a lot of time. And like I said, we are making our work. There's no county in the state right now that can go out in the field with computers like we have, have laptops, update things. We were the first in pictures on the web, we're the first that you could search on the web with things. There's nobody that does that. Winston Salem, Forsyth, Wakeville, Mecklenburg done that. So we have some good stuff. It's getting old, yes, but it's still operating. So my mind is, we're going to sit on that for a while, see where we head. And when we get some good information and feel excited about something, we'll start talking again, but it's not a priority right now.
I appreciate that you thought, Richard.
Now that's it, I mean, that's a good bad note. You know, we just got to be honest with each other. And right now, the most important thing is extension things, having staff available so we can answer questions. And, you know, the part of the customer service is now the important thing. And we have to put everything in place. I ain't gay. And, you know, I'm not, just saying it to get people right. The best thing elected officials can do is put people in place to cover these areas because when your constituency, my friend next door calls tax office and can't get an answer because phones are ringing because nobody there to answer, you know, they ain't happy. And we know the ones away from here, they think that, you know, we ain't coming up with anything better to do except, you know, be there on their time schedule. So if we don't want a Mecklenburg, then we need to plan the service for it. Everything we do is based on quality service. You go to restaurant service and that, you don't want to go back. If you come into the tax office or EMT office or sheriff office and get bad service, you going to call the sheriff, you going to call the county commissioner. So the best thing we do is be prepared and that's what we're going to try to do in this coming budget.
So you're saying quick, the first thing we need to do is instruct the county managers to, if you can find somebody from another department to work that front desk, that can be a sign.
Yeah, they need to, we need to sign, we've been talking about it, but that is on the top agenda.
Richard, can I ask you a question? Your evaluators or appraisers, how do they compare, you talk about training and all that? What type of certificate's compared to the private sector?
Well, I've taken, I've taken all of the courses. The White House side, I got every course the White has.
Do you have your other appraiser dictation?
Well, they have, not everyone like the White, but they got the majority of them. A residential appraiser, somebody that, Kevin Stiles or somebody. We got all the courses, Kevin.
And it goes for two.
Yeah. See, what the difference is, they are certified by the Board of Appraisers in State North Carolina. You have to get points for actual appraisal for individuals. We do math, so we can't get points. Math's all set up by the Tax Foundation in Washington D.C. But we do our courses, like, I want extra credit. I could go take one course that you're talking about today and we could get credit for it. So that's the type of training. But those training, even through the Institute of Government, when I came on, you go to Institute of Government, a course would be maybe $50. Those same courses now are $600, $800. So, I mean, it's not cheap. If I send four people down there for a week, that's $2,400 just for the course plus add in all the other expenses.
So you don't have to give this rate or proceed or...
You got so much, you got to do each year. So, I mean, it's ongoing. You got, and every two years it starts over. But the courses are getting so expensive that we won't have to budget some of that.
Yeah, I'm a broker and I've been saying, but I would have to do it, all I need is those eight hours to continue education this year. Another question is, when you have contested values or whatever, contested cases, how does your department's appraisal fees compare to the private sector?
Well, the difference in private sector, I take you out to your house and I'd say it's a 2,000 square foot ranch style, it's two acres. What I do is I just start looking for any 2,000 square foot house on acreage, two acre, one acre, and then I come back to yours. The government sector, we have to worry about everyone around you being equitable, all land being equitable. And so we have to take in a lot of consideration that a fee appraiser wouldn't have to take because we got to have that equity. They're just taking you, they care less about your neighbor next door, if his is right or wrong. But if I said your value and your neighbor next door got the same house and his value isn't the same as yours almost, see, that causes an equity question and that's what will kill the government sector faster than anything. All they have to do about yours is worry about, is part of the comps they get comparable to yours.
You use a neighborhood comps where a parent can go within a five...
And I can go anywhere too, but I got to worry about, is it fair to everyone around you? Even if I, in other words, if Corbin's next to you, he didn't appeal, but he saw my website one day and saw that George is $38,000 cheaper, first thing he going to do is call me. Well, the fee appraiser, he care less if his is $38,000 or higher than yours. He don't have a case.
Well, that makes it tough outside of subdivisions where you have codes you get out in the mixed neighborhoods and that's hard to do.
And we got mainly mixed neighborhoods in this state.
It's tough to run those codes.
I mean, not only really true, true neighborhoods that work good or the country clubs and highly, I mean, I mean, they're real similar.
Highly respected places. Okay, thank you, Richard.
That's where, and we're going, best thing we want to try to do is keep that value informed this year and finish the work.
That's key.
Now, as I said at the beginning, I think the challenge we've got is communicating exactly what this rebound is, what it's about, the fact that it's not a way to increase taxes and it is a, a rebound in the property and how that revenue neutral amount, how that fits into the...
And they have tried to find out the information, helping people in Jackson County. Why are they, you know, what is that? It's only, it's new construction, part of it is cashers, a lot of, some big homes being built there. You can see a higher percentage of 1500 now, we probably did before, it's on five years. So the boat's turning, it's just really slow.
Yeah, it's running with one preparer.
One, one order in order.
Ronnie's looking at the question. I'm just curious. A lot of people, there's probably people that are feeling that, and it's just extremely confusing and the common citizen's extremely confusing. Is the county planning on doing any kind of public hearings to where the tax office can come and...
We do that every rebound and that's part of the public service we're talking about.
You hear a lot of versions of what they're doing and not hear the truth, you know, in the recent election year for the commission.
Yeah, we actually still, I don't know, they took it down to the last couple of years. We actually got a program on the web that goes through the whole thing and you can...
One year we did flyers, now that's just way, we did flyers, we did...
And that goes back to print. See, when we send our tax bills, the rotary, all these people we put on the program with consequently.
So what percentage could, you know, now, is going out of the county, tax bills going out of the county?
I hadn't run that in a long, long time, but it was over 50%. The problem we have is the bills go out in July. Well, a lot of our summer people come up and they switch their address from July to here. So you have to interpolate where things are, but it was 50%. I don't think that decreased because, you know, if you look at the census, if you figure those numbers, you know, that's why our census showed what, 33, 36,000 people? If you took the actual number of people, but they use 2.1 for each house we have, our population would be around 60,000. So you can, to do that.
Are there gears sometime around you?
Okay, thank you, boy.
What the names are, so that's easier for them to report.
Richard Lattner, our tax supervisor? We went over, just a little bit over time, but that is a, should have been, should have been mentioned. Send me to go 75% of our budget.